6 o'clock, I will call the Board of Selectmen July 10th, 2023, meeting to order.
Okay. I think we're going to... Brendan, is there anything? Why don't we do public safety building maintenance? I think we can do that in five minutes before we go to the Board of Assessors.
Okay, so in my report, I talk about the fact that there are a number of things that we've noticed on the new public safety building that need attention. And they're not anything right now that's causing a problem for the building. Issue is that some of these things might create water problems, things that will manifest over time. And if they can be repaired and corrected now, you'll probably save a lot of trouble and time and money later. One of the things we noticed is a lot of the... The PVC trim that's on the building is starting to pull away in areas. It's usually at the end of a run where the fastener isn't close enough to the end to keep it pinned down, so it's starting to find its way out. We've noticed that stain on some of the cedar shingles is beginning to peel in some places, and catching it now might seal that in.
The stain is?
The stain is starting to peel, yep, in sheets, right off of it.
It's literally curling right off of the shingles.
The stain usually soaks in, you know?
The public safety building, the police and fire department.
The brand-new building.
Cedar shingles are.
There's also something they used on the building called color-match caulking, and that was intended to seal between the siding and the trim. And in many places, that's where it is, but in other places, it was carelessly left off to the side, and I think over time, as things fade, the caulk is not fading the same way as the siding, and now you can see things that you couldn't necessarily see before. And so, the way to address this would be to bring in a contractor, because it's beyond warranty, it's way beyond warranty. Bring in a contractor after we get a specification from an engineer or an architect as to what areas need attention and what the approach should be to make these repairs, or in some cases, it's maintenance. The money to do that is still available, because remember, the project itself came in quite a bit under the budget and under the amount that the town authorized to spend. And so, there is plenty of money to do this, because the project has not yet been closed out. The first step, though, would be to hire that designer, that engineer, to develop a design and do a cost estimate before you decided to go any further. Because I couldn't estimate for you right now, sitting here, what it would cost to address all of the items.
Is there any responsibility to the contractor, or no?
These things are all beyond warranty.
So I am... So it's beyond warranty, which means it's at least a year old?
That's right.
But we still have money in the building project budget?
Yes, because the project carried a contingency, a large contingency, that we didn't even tap into. Because the project came in about $800,000 under budget, and we never even had to utilize the underage, let alone get to the contingency. So there's plenty of money to do it. It's a question of how the selectmen want to approach it.
And so, what you're saying is getting the architect to come in and produce a full list of all the things that need to be done?
And specify it, and do a cost estimate. So whether it's an engineer or an architect, we could get someone to specify it and do a cost estimate, and then you will know what we're talking about for an overall cost if all of these things are addressed in one fell swoop.
Brendan, can we use that money until it's expended, however long that takes?
Or until the project is officially closed out?
What would close out the project?
Really, a vote of the board. A vote of the board.
But I don't see us closing out the project until we've dealt with the roof issue.
Because the roof...
Because the roof is still open.
We've left it open just because of that reason, which is a separate thing, it's on a separate track, okay?
For sure, yeah.
But the money is there. Not saying that you're going to choose to spend it, I'm saying if you want to know what these different things add up to, we need to bring someone in.
Definitely.
Well, I think it's a significant project in expense, and it was, you know, a huge amount of taxpayer dollars. I wouldn't want to see a building fall into disrepair that's in its infancy at this point. So I think it's, as much as I hate to spend money on something that's brand-new, if we don't protect it now, we're going to be, it's going to cost us a lot more down the road. So I'm in favor of hiring somebody to look at what that is going to cost, or what it's going to take. Elva, when you chat, if you can just get a little bit closer to the microphone, Joan mentioned that she's having some audio issues with capturing us. So is there any more discussion on that?
No, do we need a vote?
I'm going to entertain a motion to authorize the town administrator to hire a architect?
Well, I would go through a process, and then you would decide. And that could be anything from somebody who is in the industry that wants to do it as a volunteer, and there might be people in town that have that expertise, all the way through some kind of a process culminating in a decision that the board would have to make to hire the person.
Okay, so you don't want a motion at this point?
Just that the board supports me looking into this, because we need that kind of information, if you want a price, that's right.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay. It is 6:08, but we still do not have one of our Board of Assessors, so I'm going to have you keep going until Mike shows up.
Okay, then we're going to move to the town meeting topics that were discussed at the last meeting. And I've done an update, and I have some information concerning a few of the questions that were asked. What I don't have yet... Elva, you specifically asked about the history of the fire trucks and why it's necessary to have a new ladder truck and eventually a new engine, and they're still working on that, so I don't have that information, but hopefully I'll have that at the next meeting. There was a question about legislation that you suggested, Peter, and how we would model that out and what it might cost, so I did some work on that. And then there was a question about what the delta would be if we moved from a simple clerk at the Council on Aging to an activity coordinator and volunteer manager. So with respect to those two things, but not the fire truck, I gave you some information. Do you want to talk about either of those two things before we get into more detail?
Can I just verify homework here? The third tier?
Yeah.
The last four items on the third tier are duplicate from the first tier? Is this just in case you need to move them to a third tier?
It's a placeholder, because they show up year after year. So if he keeps them on third tier, he bumps them up to where they need to be first or second, and then...
Don't have to worry about duplicates.
No.
No, no, they may show up at a Fall Town Meeting or an Annual Town Meeting, so it's just my notation.
Town Council is looking into the tax issue, property tax cap?
Well, the one example that we had was the only one he was aware of.
Oh.
The special legislation in Salem. That was different, though. That was if you did affordable housing. You're talking about street, if you qualify by income and age.
Yeah.
That, he was away last week, so I don't have anything back on that. He's going to be calling me probably tomorrow or Wednesday to go over a whole bunch of things, for a couple of reasons. A, he was on vacation, and B, we needed to wait for the new fiscal year to begin.
In the Tier 1, the Centennial Grove bathroom?
Yeah.
Can I just ask, are we looking into whether or not doing compostable versus a regular bathroom?
We're not, because it was felt that if we come up with flush toilets, it will actually entice more people to utilize the facility, whether it's a resident or someone who wants to rent the facility. Right now, we've seen rentals drop off because we don't have, we just have, you know, a composting toilet that's well-done is certainly better than a portable toilet, I'm not arguing that, but a flush toilet is going to actually do the trick, I think, for helping with rentals and revenue for the town.
On Fall Town Meeting, my only question, and it's not going to be answered tonight, but if we can make a note of it, possible sale of leased Robben Island properties to leaseholders. So those are the two parcels that we've talked about, you know, at several meetings now. One of the things that dawned on me while I am in favor of this, I know the question will come up about annual revenue. So when we, as leaseholds, do we have those separated from the house versus the garage or the outbuilding?
Yeah, those are separate leases, I think, Pam.
So I think it would be important for us to know what those figures look like, so that...
Yeah, we'll get that information. It's not a lot, because it's not a habitable lot.
Correct.
But we'll bring that in for the next, because we're going to talk about this at every meeting.
Absolutely, but I think that's going to be a question that's going to come up, so we should have that at our fingertips. I have nothing else on the Fall Town Meeting. Elva, do you have anything else on Fall Town Meeting items?
Are we going to talk about the GPW fuel?
It's something that's been on the list for a while, it's not really...
Moving much.
Moving, you're right. It's really up to the board to determine whether you want to support that, not bring it up, whatever.
Yeah, and I only have the limited experience I had with when the school system put in at the Manchester Bath and Seas DPW. And it wasn't used properly at first, there was all kind, there was a little issue, I don't really know, remember the details. But my concern is with tanks, of course, they have to be replaced every X amount of years, is that, you know, does that mean if we did go this route, it's an above-ground tank, I mean, I just don't want something that has to be...
It would have to be above-ground, there's no more underground for what we would do.
Okay, thank you.
But again, it's not a priority item right now, unless the board decides that it's something you want to really seek, it's just going to sit there, because it was an idea, that's all.
And then the last thing I had on my notes is just the, so the additional funding, this is in Tier 1, the additional funding to continue the maintenance of downtown public areas, I just don't know whether or not we want to include the frequency, like how many times a month it gets done, because I know I've heard complaints over the years that, you know, it looks like a mess, and then, you know, then the DPW shows up, and this is a public area, do we want to make sure we have it for the remainder of the month?
Yeah, so we're under a contract right now where they're looking at it. Jody, is it every week right now for the maintenance of the downtown areas? It's once a week right now. And I think we would be seeking the same $20,000 and eventually get it into the budget, in the line item budget. Set it on that for now?
Sure.
That's it on Fall Town Meeting for me.
All right, it's not here yet, right?
No, I'm going to text her.
Okay. So we'll move into the sale of Gregory Island Properties update, and I think you just did a site visit just recently as a board, right?
Yep.
I mean, you saw this before, but if you need to see it again, this is the summary. I don't think it's in, it was in the package the previous meeting.
Yeah. Can we share this?
Yeah.
I have my map with me, but apparently I don't...
So really, at issue right now is whether the board wants to move forward with some or all of the lots that had offers made on them. Or none at all.
Okay, so you, sorry, you're on Gregory Island.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Did you get feedback from the people that bid on the property as to the state of the property that they would like to see? Because you were going to reach out to the people that had bid and find out about natural state versus fences, did you just say that?
Just what people, no, just what people wrote, and that was on that summary sheet?
Okay, I have that.
Right. And so, you were going to do a site visit to determine whether you think natural state, meaning it's, yep, there it is, it's going to stay like that, and maybe you can put anything that's non-permanent on it, like park a boat there, park a car there, I don't know what it would be. You know, you could go all the way down to you're not going to put in anything that's paved, it's up to you, you know, that's, the announcement said that the board would determine exactly what the conditions were.
So I think we have a couple of things that we need to talk about. We need to talk about whether we want to sell them, we need to talk about the parcels, are we selling all of them, some of them, what we're doing, and then what state we want to keep them in. So let's, we just did a site visit, actually, this afternoon at 4:30. So we've walked the site, we have the map, we all got one, color-coded. The two parcels of concern specifically were 31 and 32 at the top of Hill Road, because there was an issue with boundaries and the ability to get a decent survey. So we saw that land, and I'm guessing, based on the, kind of the topography of it, the board noticed that there's a huge drop on that, and it would be difficult if it was clear-cut or things were stored up there, plus the fact that there's no definitive boundaries or the ability to survey one of the parcels. So I'm inclined not to sell 31 or 32, even though we did receive bids from one person on 31 and two people on 32. So those were the parcels that were in blue and red at the top of the hill. I don't know how the board felt about that.
Yeah, I agree, I think that, you know, not selling 31, because there are no boundary lines that are known, and we have a tie for the two, which makes it difficult, so maybe hold those out for now and go ahead with the rest and set some criteria.
Elva, how do you feel about 31 and 32?
Exactly the same way.
Okay, so we're taking 31 and 32 off the table.
Right, and then there was one where no offers made, that was...
Yes, that was 42.
Yeah.
So that won't be sold?
Doesn't matter, right?
Because there's no bids?
So that leaves the others that had bids on it.
I think it's not on this. What's on your map? Because yours is...
Oh, maybe it's in one of these.
Another is already sold.
Yeah, this one doesn't have anything.
So for the remaining ones, do you intend to come up with a standard language for what they, what someone can do and what they can't do? And it could range from, you know, completely natural state to, you can allow a fence to whatever it is the board wants to say or do.
It is 42.
Which one is 42, Ruth?
Is it in yellow?
42 is this little teeny one down here, below 31 and 32.
Yeah, the yellow one.
Okay, yeah, okay. No one bid on it.
Yeah. Well, I think that, you know, we'd like to keep it in natural state if, you know, and that not happening because of what's there currently, probably leave it that it cannot be improved or changed from what it is currently.
Which means nothing, right? You're talking about no gravel driveway, nothing.
Right, yeah, no changes whatsoever. So if something's stored on it, I guess we allow it to continue to be stored on it, like a boat, trailer, boat, whatever. If there's, you know, firewood stored on it, that can continue, but if there's nothing like that happening as of, I guess, when the bids come in, or whatever it would be, whatever the timeframe would be.
Well, the problem is, we don't know what's on each and every lot, because we don't have, we don't have the line to see where the lot begins and ends.
Right.
I think if you said that no improvements, but items can be stored on it, so long as there's no other prohibition against storing that type of an item, you might be okay.
My concern is, without saying the words like "in its natural state" or "as it sits today," it doesn't prevent clear-cutting, and then it becomes potentially another clear-cut lot for storage.
But you could say, "No trees shall be cut," you know?
No vegetation mowed, no vegetation...
Well, it's already being, some is already being maintained.
Unless it's, that's the existing state.
As it sits today.
But you don't know what the existing state is, because you don't know where the lines are, okay? No way for us to say, "This is what it looks like," because the line could go through something and it could be on the other lot.
And for us to get that information would cost more...
Would cost a lot of money.
More than we'll be able to get.
Well, and then you go back to the enforcement issue, because as it sits today, in 10 years from now, when you read that in a deed...
Correct.
It looks different in 10 years, as it sat 10 years earlier, so that's problematic. So you can say things like, "No pavement, no..."
So what about saying that any, anything, whether regardless of putting a boat on it or putting a shed on it, that you have to get approval to do so?
Even if it exists currently?
It shouldn't exist currently, because it's ours.
I know, but some, I'm sure, do.
Maybe, yeah, but it would be, what I'm trying to say is, they don't have a right to have it there, so they would have to ask you anyway, even if it's already there.
Right.
Well, that becomes problematic, because you've got some pretty significant amounts of money for the parcel to be able to store that stuff that's already existing. We need to come up with a way to say, "As it sits today," or "As it's being used today," or "No change of use from its current..." But I also am not so sure that a fence is problematic, you know what I mean? Like, if one of the people want to put a fence up to protect somebody from cutting down their trees, they should be able to put up a fence and say, "That's my boundary." You could say something like, "No, that they must come before the Board of Selectmen with a survey plan before doing improvements, so that we can make sure that it's, the boundaries are well-defined, so that they're not just cutting somebody else's trees."
You can say whatever you want, really, it's a matter of, you know, do you...
Forcing it, or nowhere.
Right, or what's fair and appropriate.
Right.
Once they purchase the property for a good sum of money.
Right, they're going to, yeah, they'd be taxed on it, yeah, yeah. I mean, you could just say that it should only be used for, shall only be used for the purposes of storage. I don't know how you're going to control trees, people cut trees down on their property all the time.
Right, but suggesting that it only be used for storage, for me, feels like you're suggesting that somebody should cut down the trees to store ten boats there.
All right, well, then, what you're saying is, you need, you're going to try to sell these with the condition that nothing changed. That's what you're saying.
And then what, how do you determine nothing, what's there?
A tough one.
Yeah.
That's a tough one.
You have to have general guidelines here, I mean, no one's, this is going to be very difficult to enforce.
Right, so something like...
So don't say "for storage," just say that there shall be no improvements made on the property.
Right, hang on a second. Jason, do you have a question?
I have a question, I have no idea what the property is, I don't have a...
You have to go to the microphones within six inches.
If you know, Butter buys a property and they combine it with theirs, what happens in the deed then?
So...
I don't know, common land law.
Yeah, we have a deed restriction that says that they can't get a building permit to build a structure, it's not habitable, even if they meet the setbacks, even if they have 150 feet of frontage, even if they're over 40,000 square feet, it's not a buildable lot. And these are also, I know that you're saying you don't know, I'm happy to give you a map.
It will combine, it will combine under the principle of merger, but the deed restriction is going to say they can't do anything with that portion of it.
But it will allow the square footage to make their current property bigger?
Yes, it will make the current property bigger, but it's still not going to be buildable.
You can make the square footage of your dwelling unit bigger, depending where it is.
Right, so if you want to put an addition on your house because it's bigger, but it still meets the setbacks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, if you needed that area to do that, then yeah.
Right.
But it can't be on the piece that was sold to you by the town.
Correct.
So it's coming down to just how much influence or control the town wants going forward in the future.
The advertisement, can you read me? There was a section in there that said that these parcels were for sale, and then the next sentence said something like "in its natural state" or something, what did that say?
Well, we didn't say "in its natural state" in the advertisement. What we said in the advertisement was, "It was to be a deed restriction developed by Town Council." It said, "The successful offerer for each lot shall accept a deed restriction to be developed by Town Council prohibiting the erection of any type of structure," that could mean a fence, by the way, "in the future, within the physical area of each lot, even if combined with an already-built-upon private lot in the future." So then we went to Town Council, and we said, "Can you make a suggestion?" Suggestion was, "Premises conveyed, subject to the restriction enforcable by the town in perpetuity, that the premises may not be further divided." Let's see. That's another interesting thing, but the non-buildable lot, I'm going to go into that in a minute. "The premises are conveyed, subject to restriction enforcable by the town in perpetuity, that the premises are not a buildable lot. No building structures, improvements, or fixtures are permitted to be constructed or installed upon the premises, and the premises shall remain in their natural state." That's what she gave us, I don't see a problem with that. But if the board does, then you're free to ask more questions. I can tell you that we're supposed to move this within 60 days.
Right.
Natural state, meaning not natural...
It's, it's...
It's, yeah, what is it?
It's open for interpretation.
It's open for interpretation.
Yeah, and maybe that's all we can do.
I mean, she's an attorney who does this all the time, you know? She came up with some language for you. I don't have any particular issue with it.
I have no problem with the way that this release of deed is written.
Yeah.
Now, the other part...
It's the best we're going to get.
Because Jason asked about it, "The premises are conveyed, subject to the restriction enforcable by the town in perpetuity, that the premises may not be further divided," okay, "except for the purposes of creating parcels that will be added to and merged with contiguous properties." So they can't break it up, but it will add, as the board just said, to the main parcel, and it's, that piece can't be built on, but it might allow somebody to say, "Oh, now I have the area to do something else."
Yeah.
Yeah. Or it might even say, "Oh, now I have more upland area on my lot, and I had a bunch of wetlands and I didn't meet the standard, now I do."
Right.
So basically, unless the board disagrees, I could go to all these people with this release deed and this draft purchase and sale agreement and say, "These are the terms, let's move forward toward a closing."
Yeah, you got the one correction I had on the purchase and sale agreement from, yes, you captured it right there, yeah.
Cross out, yeah, that was it. Does anyone have an objection to me trying to use these two documents, which you got at the last meeting, to move the sales along?
Do you remember these two?
Yeah.
So I have no problem with either of these.
Yeah, I think we should go with what our attorney suggests, they know what's going on, they understand what our intent is, and if that's the best we can get, that's the best we can get, so I would agree to that.
All right, then, I can do that.
Do you want me to do a motion to use these as...
Yeah, because then, because...
I'm sorry, I do want to ask a question. So I'm looking at 19, 20, and 21. So if 19 and 20 are sold to the same individual, and they own 20 in between, that means they could put up a full building covering that whole lot, because now they have this, these other...
Maybe, if the math works, maybe, yeah. You're not going to be able to control every eventuality. The only way to control it is to not sell it, that's that simple.
I just wanted to make sure that we were all aware that it...
So you're saying, so the same person will buy 19 and 21, and they already own 20, so you're saying they could put a building up?
They can tear down whatever's in 20 currently and build a bigger...
A bigger, right now, if they tried to fill out the entire middle property, they couldn't, because it'd be covering the whole lot, but with a bigger property, then maybe the lot they own now could support a bigger dwelling or a bigger structure.
I'm not saying I'm for or against, I'm just...
It could.
To make it...
It could, but they wouldn't meet the setbacks, because they get the 150 feet of frontage, but they don't have sideline.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it all depends on the math.
Right.
Again, you either sell them and you allow certain things to happen, or you don't sell them, and control the properties forever.
It's 240,000.
Yeah, so...
Yep. No, no, it's a good question. So I will entertain a motion to accept the release of deed and the purchase and sales agreement as prepared by Town Council for the sale of the lots known as the Gregory Island, Gregory Island Road parcels.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that's accepting lots 31, 32, and 42?
Correct.
All right, I'll approach everyone this week then, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone here yet?
No one here.
Did you get a response?
See if I got a response.
You want this back?
Yeah, thanks. If you need another one, I have.
I have it as well, somewhere. So what were the numbers we accepted? 31, 32, and 42. We won at least one person. 42.
Technically, the way that law reads, you gave him a shot.
Gave him a chance, and the three selectmen could vote. Because they were posting, I believe.
They were. Did we talk about this?
We will. No, no.
So...
So now I'm going to move on to the, um, zoning bylaw project review. This way you have the ability to look at all that and ask questions. I mean, you're going to be seeing that, that town meeting summary thing every meeting from here until you post it, so... Alright, so we have spoken to MAPC about the continuing work within the zoning bylaw review project. And there's a couple of handouts. One is the, the colored handout, and the other one is kind of a, a running timetable. And really, let's start on page two of that, of this document. On, um, July 26th, it'll be the next chance for the selectmen and the planning board to meet jointly. Um, there have been several of these all along, and we will post the selectmen again for that. Then the second community forum, which was going to be in May, is now going to be, um, I think they chose, I don't know if they chose an exact date. Didn't, weren't they still talking about ranges, Ruth?
August 7th through 11th.
Right, yeah, so they didn't choose it yet, okay. So the other calendar, the, the one-page calendar kind of gives you an idea based on the color codes. Then there would be another chance for a selectman, planning board meeting, a September community forum number three. Then on the third page of that document, again, every time there's a community forum, a chance for the selectmen and planning board to meet. And then there will actually be hearings done as required for any zoning bylaw that is potentially going on the town meeting warrant. Town meeting happens November 13th, and then there's follow-up work. And the key here is, I think you're going to hear, especially when you go to the next joint meeting, that the planning board is going to choose several things that are key items. They're not going to, even though there are other things that can be done, they want to get a few key items done, determine if, if the town meeting votes for those, and that's successful, there would probably be another article that they would then exercise and read that would end the moratorium, and then in the future, they'd start working on other things. The plan would be, if they don't get the key items successfully through, then they would read the one that says, extend the mor, they would, they would read the one that says, extend the moratorium. You know, and I wrote about it in my report. I don't know if you have any questions on it. I just wanted to bring it back up because a lot's been happening in the background.
I have no questions.
No.
Okay, so, and you have the information they had, so I'll move on to the next. Which, that was it. Those were the items in my report.
Okay, and I do see that we have Daniel and Claudia with us. If you would both like to unmute and join the meeting, we would love to have you.
Alright, hello.
Hi, Daniel, how are you?
Doing well, thank you, Ruth. How are you?
I'm doing good. Bear with me one second, we have a little audio issue. Claudia, will you say hi and let me see if I can hear you?
Hello?
Hi, Claudia. You're really soft. Bear with me one second.
It might be me, too.
Okay.
Joan, is there any way you can turn up the gain on the feed coming in from our two guests? Is that a separate channel? Because they're coming in low over the house system. Also, Madam Chair, we have a larger, growing crowd. Do you want me to get it working here, or is that good enough? Because what, they're going to show a presentation.
Presentation of placemaking. Dana, Jody, do you want it on the big screen, or do you think that the TV is good enough? Sure, try turning that up and we'll have them test. Do you want the big screen, or do you want the TV screen?
It's easy, it's easy.
Okay. Claudia or Daniel, will one of you chat for me for a moment? Just give me a test.
Sure, testing, one, two, three.
Alright. Sorry, it's, it's definitely audio on our side.
Alright, no worries. And will we be able to share our screen?
Yes. We're getting our projector screen up and running. It's going to just be a couple of minutes here, so give me a moment, we'll get that going. You can share a screen, and then we'll get it up on the big screen. I'm going to slide over. How you doing, Joan? Do you need me to have them chat? Okay.
We have, yeah, yeah, and it should be on the website.
Yeah, sure. So, while Brian gets set up, I'm going to, I'm going to do some of the basic agenda items while he gets set up. So... So, under other business, the approval of the weekly warrant is going to be tabled. I will entertain a motion to vote to exempt from Section 20 of Chapter 268A of the General Laws, the contracts and amounts for the individuals listed below contained within the 62923 warrant pursuant to subsection D of said section.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to exempt from Section 20 of Chapter 268A of the General Laws, the contracts and amounts for individuals listed below contained within the 63023 warrant pursuant to subsection D of said section.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the selectmen's June 26, 2023 open meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to approve and sign a Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 33B, transfer in the amount of, as listed on Page 2 and 3 of our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we do have some more on...
You're going to have all those to sign in just a moment.
We have, we have another...
These are all the 33Bs, if you want to take those. Um, I will entertain a motion to... I'm going to hold that. Okay, I think that's everything we can do quickly. I will entertain a motion to ratify the fire department, firefighter and probationary firefighters, as listed on Page 5 of the agenda, for a term of one year.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a reminder that the next regular Board of Selectmen's meeting will take place on Monday, July 24th, 2023, at 6:00 PM, Third Floor Auditorium of the Town Hall, 30 Martin Street.
What happened to Tina?
She's not on line.
She was, or she's not on? Or she was?
Mike McCallum is on his way down. I texted him, he's on. How about? On this side of me? Okay, second. Oh, thank you. Have to vote all of these?
We did, we did, we did all those. We did them all at once. That's what we did.
So Daniel, Claudia, we're having some difficulty getting it onto our big screen, so if you want to share a screen with us, we're going to look at it from the, um, the TV screen that we have in front of us.
Sure, this is, uh, first time using this platform, usually on Zoom, so I'm afraid I don't see a share screen option.
Yeah. Joan, can you make that any louder, or is it still? I'm going to shut the fan off, will that help?
Can you hear me now?
We're, we're not getting you crystal clear, it's very muffled. Oh, Daniel, can you speak, please?
Sure, yeah, testing, one, two, three. Can you hear me now?
Not well. They're working on it.
Alright, alright.
Daniel, can you turn up the gain on your system and Windows for the microphone?
Sure. Me. You can do that. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Yeah? Alright.
Can you go a little bit more?
I am maxed out on my input volume here, but I can, if I raise my voice, speak for my diaphragm, does that help?
You're much better. We're going to shut off the fan in the room.
Okay, alright, we'll try to speak.
Yeah, we can hear you. Claudia might need to do the same thing. Claudia, will you give me a test, please?
Yes, hello.
Oh, much better. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Great. And I am looking for a share screen button, but I'm afraid I don't see one on this system. Is there, uh, do you have a way to recommend for me to share my screen?
Brendan is actually allowing it now. Give me one second.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, great.
There you have it.
Alright. Great, can you all see my screen and hear me?
We can.
Okay, wonderful. Well, um, are you all ready in the audience there? I can, I'll begin. We have about a 10-minute presentation here to share with you, and then, um, open to your response. So, we've been working for the past six months with the Downtown Essex Placemaking Group. For those of you who, um, aren't familiar, who weren't following this plan, it, it did come rather quickly, it was just six months, but we've been working with this group. We have had a survey out and a town hall to solicit input into this project. This project emerged, um, as one of the nine recommendations from the Rapid Recovery Plan that the Town of Essex and Manchester conducted together in 2021. And the idea of creating a placemaking plan was one of those recommendations. So, the town, uh, was awarded a successful grant from the Mass. Downtown Initiative, which funded our work to develop this placemaking plan. So in working with the, uh, working group, we identified, um, the boundaries of the plan and four different placemaking components that we could think about holistically to create, to improve placemaking downtown and make downtown more walkable, uh, and more of a place for people to linger and to frequent local businesses. So, the study area of the, this placemaking plan is rough, is very similar to the one from the local Rapid Recovery Program. It essentially follows Main Street here from Western Ave to Southern Ave, and extends along Martin Street to capture Memorial Park and the Town Hall and Library. The working group decided to focus on four different, uh, placemaking projects, and I'll go through them in detail, but really quickly, they are streetscape furniture, wayfinding, developing a concept plan for a pocket, for a park at 24 Martin Street, and landscaping improvements. So just, to hold all of those four different components together, the, you, um, you all, the residents of Essex through the survey and the town hall, opted... residents of Essex through the survey and the Town Hall opted for this theme. There were three themes presented, and this one was the clear winner, ship shape, which emphasizes clean curved lines with wood metallic materials that are reminiscent of ships from Essex. So I think people saw this as a way to both to give a nod to Essex's long history of shipbuilding and to bring that forward into the future, and also to provide a nod to the curving Essex River that meanders through downtown. So this theme was carried forward into all of the placemaking components. And we'll start with the streetscape furniture. Looking at the furniture, we decided to go with this set, the FGP collection from landscape forms, because we thought that it had clean lines and with wood metallic materials that would kind of give a nod to shipbuilding. The wood on this furniture, there's three different kinds, and it can, some of it can fade to a pewter gray, which we thought would blend in really nicely with the marsh. The, this top for the trash can receptacle will keep out rain from going into the trash and will also keep out pigeons. And the bench being wood will be really soft to the touch and cool in the summer and a little bit warmer in the winter. And for tables, there is this neat carousel collection that has these hoop seats, and they come in different arrangements, so you can have a four-seater, a six-seater, or even a two-seater. And there's also a bike rack option that comes with this collection as well, that can be installed as a one-off or multiples. So go through, we did, surveyed where there are existing benches and all of these elements and where they could be proposed. So as you see, there are a lot of benches installed throughout downtown. You just did this nice improvement along the causeway, and there's a lot of benches already in Memorial Park, but there's none at 24 Martin Street and in Paglia Park. So that's where we're focused, we're recommending to install new benches and to leave the existing benches as they are and to, as they reach the end of their life, to phase them out with this new set. Tables, again, the only tables, places to sit in downtown Essex on public tables are in Memorial Park, and we thought, after much conversation, we thought that 24 Martin Street would be a really nice gathering space, and so that's why we're showing a few tables here and potentially some in Paglia Park once that's prepared and ready to be converted to a park. In terms of trash receptacles, if you're going to have tables, you definitely want some trash receptacles nearby, 24 Martin Street and a Paglia Park, we're also suggesting to put one on the causeway as well. And in terms of bike racks, suggesting to install some where there's room along the causeway and also at 24 Martin Street, there's a place where you could place a set of them and also at the Town Hall and Library. So following the recommendations in the LRP, definitely want parking spaces near your public buildings. In terms of wayfinding, you know, the town has already created a kiosk and historical signage throughout, so, and because the, the main street is a state highway, you're fairly limited in terms of using traditional signage to guide people through downtown. So we were looking at alternative forms of wayfinding that can provide visual cues to create more of a sense of place and to ground people in space and encourage them to walk throughout downtown. So we have a map of the existing elements, and I'll show you pictures, but essentially we're looking at some proposed public art installations in the public parks, also potentially at the entrance to downtown from Southern Ave along the hillside here. All of the new light poles will be, provide a great opportunity for, for public art on the ground and also winter lights above. Kiosks, you already have a kiosk along the causeway, but we thought some wayfinding kiosks might be really helpful, especially at 24 Martin Street adjacent to the parking lot. And then crosswalks are an opportunity, as they're getting painted, to create a signature crosswalk for Essex that can signify that people have arrived downtown. So to give you a sense of what we're talking about, you have this lovely stairwell that connects from your public parking area to Main Street. We thought that would be a great opportunity for art on the stairwells. It could go on the rise, as you see here, so you can see it walking up, or it could go on the run of stairs, so you can see it going down. There is some opportunity for temporary sculpture to be installed at 24 Martin Street and at that entrance that I pointed out, leading into downtown. Winter lights, creative crosswalks, the feedback we received from the surveys in the open house was that something, folks didn't, were intrigued by the idea of creative crosswalks, but didn't want it to get too kind of out of hand and detract from the natural beauty of, of the area. So we discussed having a kind of signature color for the crosswalks, like an Essex green. So if all the crosswalks, for example, were painted the signature color, as you enter downtown, that would create more of a sense of place, it's more of a sense of arrival that you are entering this walkable downtown where people can park and explore. Information kiosks, like you said, like we talked about, you have one already, but one can certainly go at the new park at 24 Main Street. And then we understand that the Shipbuilding Museum and some of your colleagues are cooking up a really interesting idea to use, to embed sidewalk art in the new sidewalk pads that are going to be poured around the new light posts that are going to be installed downtown, which provides a really nice opportunity for, to encourage people to keep navigating through the space and to reinforce this theme of shipbuilding. So moving on to 24 Martin Street, this is a place where a lot of these ideas can come together, it's kind of a blank canvas at the moment, as this open lawn space. So after much discussion and a co-design session where we worked with members of the working group, we did a site tour, we went back into the library and drew our, what people thought could, could work there. And the concept plan that where we have landed is here, as you can see. So some of the things we discussed that are guided the development of this plan was that folks seem to really want this to be a kind of a quiet contemplative space for small gatherings, for people to come and enjoy, a place to sit, bring a bite to eat, have an impromptu picnic. So, and a place that would be a park that wouldn't be kind of too expensive to create, but something that could be manageable by, by, with your existing resources. So take you through the, the main elements. So thinking about a cost, we did not want to do a lot of landscaping and terracing of the space, but we did suggest that you create one terrace here to level up, create a level space at the top of the site, so we're calling this the overlook, with some nice shade trees that could draw people into the site, offering some benches that will overlook the Memorial Park and the marsh beyond. Some nice stairs could provide additional seating to draw people into the grounds, which could have landscaping, natural landscaping beds, and even some, potentially some public art. Could also kind of walk down along the grass walkway here. We have this arcade with some quiet benches underneath the shade. And then coming down here, we have the courtyard where we have some scattered picnic tables adjacent to some lightly shaded areas. And this we're calling the basin, we left mostly open, so this can be a great space for lawn games, bocce, cornhole, croquet, et cetera. And then the, in the ship shape theme, you may have noticed that there was a, an artistically designed bench that was kind of reminiscent of a ship, and so that's what we're showing here, kind of uniquely designed signature element for this, for this space. And then moving on here, you have this lovely patio, which could be a great space for tables and chairs and bistro furniture with chess tables kind of embedded onto the tabletops. So, and then a, adjacent to the parking lot, a kiosk where people can come and get oriented towards the space and bike racks along the edge. So this would, these low-lying plants would provide a nice buffer to the space to create more of an intimate area for people to explore, but also create open sightlines, so people can make, so people sitting here can see what's going on in the park and have a view of the marsh beyond. So moving on to landscaping, you have these wonderful opportunities for landscaping along the causeway here, and so we documented all of these spaces. And in darker purple, we have these kind of signature park areas, and there's also planting beds, opportunities on the street islands on the, in the entrances to the park. So we worked with your local landscape designer, Robyn Cantor, to create a plant palette that would have a cohesive set of plants, perennials, that will be drought resistant, tolerant to the salt extreme conditions that you have there, and would have this plant palette that would mostly follow in the yellows and purples. So this is all provided in the plan, and it, it goes from grasses, perennials, shrubs, et cetera. So as far as next steps, next steps on 24 Martin Street would be to iterate on this design a little further, to hire a landscape architect to develop a more robust cost estimate, work with you on finalizing the design, and to ensure that the plant beds and palette match your landscaping palette, to secure funding for the project, and then put it out to bid and make it happen. Streetscape amenities, so that furniture, you know, you can install some of it at 24 Martin Street to gauge a response from the public, and then start to phase in that furniture as your older pieces reach the end of their life. For wayfinding, the top priority would be to continue the collaboration with the Shipbuilding Museum and prepare groundwork stencils to be installed around the new concrete pads that will be installed around the light poles. And now that you have this lovely new causeway, can think about painting a colored crosswalk along the causeway and across Shepherd Drive. And you can do that with traditional paint, or you can buy this crushed glass that is more expensive upfront but lasts longer, so it's an equivalent cost over time, but has, but will make, use less, entail less maintenance. So all of these elements will demand a budget, so, especially for winter lights, and thinking about your priorities in terms of if you have enough to develop artwork for the stairwell. In terms of landscaping, the top priority would be to create new ship-shaped planters for the street islands along Main Street and the intersections of Western Ave, Spring Street, Martin Street, and Southern Ave. The existing street, ship-shaped planters reached the end of its life, and so this could be an opportunity for the town to invest in something, a signature element that will create more of a sense of arrival as people enter downtown and provide a wayfinding cue that you have arrived and you're now entering this walkable space. And then to continue using that plant palette as you move forward into the future. So that's about the end of our presentation, we're trying to keep it short, so that, let's stop sharing screens, yes, we're trying to keep it short, you have the plan, you can review it in your own time, but we're, we're open to your response this time.
I had the opportunity to actually be part of the placemaking, so I've been following the project all along, so I don't have any questions. Thank you both so much for all of your hard work, I think it came out great, I appreciate you incorporating all of our suggestions, and I look forward to seeing it actually built.
I have, I have a couple of comment questions. Number one, there's sidewalk along Main John Wise where they join, and there's sidewalk along Western Ave, has there been any thought to putting a crosswalk there? I know there's one just down at the Spring Street entrance, but I'm sure it's a nightmare to get that processed through Mass DOT, but I just think that there's an opportunity, since there are two sidewalks and there's an obvious cross connection there, that maybe that's something that should be thought about. Also, are all the plants in the plant palette native plants, as well as salt tolerant, et cetera? And my third comment, has there been any thought given to the invasive fragmites that exist between the two parcels of property, the Wine Exchange and the Great Marsh Brewery? I know it's private property, but it really is kind of detracts from the look of the downtown.
Those are all great points, fragmites is, yeah, can be a terror. You know, the, in terms of sidewalk and crosswalk locations, we were going off of engineering studies that had been done by the town already. Doing another engineering study was kind of out of our scope, but I think you're working with MAPC there, and they may be able to help you navigate that, those locations. And yeah, in terms of the specific places where we recommended landscaping improvements was just confined to the public spaces, the spaces that the town owns, since we can't, we weren't, you know, prepared to recommend changes to, to private land.
Sure, I just bring it up as a thought, I'm sure it's probably been discussed, and maybe a nudge to the property owners.
I want to say this was nice, I have looked through the documents that were provided to us. I did have two places that I would have loved to have seen on it that it wasn't, one being, actually both being the bridges, across from the Great Marsh, what's that, 130? What's the address? The cement wall that's there, would have been nice if we could have some type of a mural, so that we're not looking at a big brick wall. And then of course, the brand new bridge, you know, I've seen other places where they have flower beds on those, those, but other than that, I think everything else. Concerned about any picnic tables down by Memorial because of how much damage I see done to the picnic tables that are down there already.
That was one of the, we brought those things up, about tables and chairs that needed to be heavy enough so that they wouldn't be stolen or damaged, so those were discussed, which I think is why they went with the, hang on one second, does it say who that is, Joan?
I think we're.
Okay. Those things, concerns were brought up, and I think that's why Danielle went with that table, that the chairs are connected to make it more difficult to damage, and it was more industrial. industrial, so to speak. So I think those were considered. As far as, this placemaking plan is, obviously, there was a lot of time and effort and hard work that went into it. It doesn't mean that other things can't be incorporated, so I think that would be beneficial to talk to the Economic Development Committee, who's kind of spearheaded this project, and they, you know, they have artists that are on their team that actually have talked about beautifying the bridges. Some of that might go back to DOT, though, because it is a state highway, so just because it's not incorporated in the plan doesn't mean it's something we can't have an eye on toward the future.
And that's why I brought it up.
Yeah, absolutely. So, Jason, do you have a comment about the placemaking? Yep.
Obviously, never seen this before. It was a great presentation. I like what you've done with the open space, especially by the old fire station. One quick question, though. On the stairs that go up from the back to where?
The villages.
Villages. Who owns those stairs? Because it doesn't fall on town property on the top, correct?
The town owns the stairs when they exit onto private property. We have a license to have the public cross from the top of the stairs over to the street.
And that license is on the deed?
No, it's a, it's not a deeded right. It's a, it's an agreement between the vill, the owner of the village and the Board of Selectmen.
All right, the current owner.
The current owner. And I can also say that there's a license from the town to the current owner for a few of the parking spots that are in the villages parking along the side, so it's kind of helping each other type thing.
I just heard the rumors that it's for sale, so that's why I kind of asked.
Yeah, well, the town, the town owns the stairs.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Since this is a public presentation, it's the first time the public's getting an opportunity to see the placemaking plan. If there's anybody that has any questions, comments, this isn't my public comment, but I, but I'd love to take input if anybody in the audience wants to ask questions. If anybody's in the room and you want to mention, just up to the microphone and about six or eight inches away so that we can hear you, Maureen.
Hi, I'm Maureen Woodman, 94 Martin Street. Just watching this, it's great, you did a great job. The first two things I would say is I would, are you flattening that area or are you going to leave it sloped?
24 Martin Street?
Correct.
It's going to stay sloped.
Okay. That's not good. And are you putting any kind of overall covering pavilion for shade, real shade, not shaded trees or bushes?
There's.
Shade, that is a full sun there, and just having a small restaurant down the street, we tent every weekend because we find now in the last probably 15 years, people have a complete aversion to the sun. And that is a full sun area in the hottest sun. Just my two thoughts, right there.
Yes.
Flatness, especially with all the handicap rules and everything that are going on right now. I'd be interested to know if you can have things on slopes like that.
Well, the, the scope that these guys did was only a high-level scope. In fact, the entire grant, which was technical assistance to the town, was just $25,000. It sounds like a lot of money, but it goes quickly when you're working with something of this scope. If the town is actually going to implement any of these recommendations, we'll have to bring in a designer to do a design, and that's where they would look at code compliance. Are we going to be flattening out the entire site? I don't think so, but might it be terraced? Possibly. It all depends on what we'll meet, as you pointed out, ADA.
But your objective is people are going to sit there, right?
Yes.
During the day, most likely. I didn't see any plan in there for night lighting. Is there a plan in there for nighttime lighting?
Not, not as yet.
Just my, just my thoughts.
Yeah, this was more about the overall coordination of public spaces and the look and feel, making that so that it's, it's coordinated throughout the downtown area. The specifics of each area as we go, that'll, that'll, we are required to do a design with a designer.
That's what I recommend there. So there's a lot of slippery slopes there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those, those are great point, I can just respond to those points.
Go ahead, Daniel.
So we, the concept plan includes one terrace to create a flat area up front on Martin Street. The more terraces you put in, the, the cost increases exponentially, so we're trying to keep costs down. And then in terms of shade, I agree, this is a very hot area, and you'll see that on the, in the concept plan, on, I didn't mention it during the presentation, but on the patio side, we are specifying a shade sail to be installed coming off of the building as something that could be explored to reinforce the theme and provide shade to people who are sitting on that patio.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room with comments about the placemaking? Is there anybody online with any comments about the placemaking presentation? Okay. Claudia, did you have anything to add?
No, I did not. I have been taking notes on all of your comments, and we really appreciate them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. If there's no other questions, I will thank you both for your presentation. It was fabulous, and we will talk to you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chair, and thank you to all the working group members who are in the audience there.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. Good night.
So, Mike, if you want to come up to the microphone, we can have you join us, or actually, you can, you're welcome to come sit beside Alva at this microphone down here. Tina, we are going to be, our 6:05 appointment is running a little bit behind, I apologize for that. Hi, have a seat.
Maureen, so wait.
Not a problem at all. So at our last meeting, we, the board was discussing that one of the Board of Assessor members is actually moving, so we need to fill that seat, and because we're not at the time of an election, we need to fill that seat from now until the next election. So we have to, the Board of Assessors must meet jointly with the Board of Selectmen to vote, and unlike when we had to meet for the unanimous vote of both boards for the Finance Committee, this is slightly different. Section 11 Appointment to Fill a Vacancy in a Town Office says that a majority of the votes of the officers entitled to vote shall be necessary to such election. So we just need the majority of the votes, and they're a board of three, we're a board of three, and at this point, when we vote, we would be four, depending on how we vote. So the discussion, we weren't, this was at the elementary school at our special town meeting, and we started talking about the need to look for somebody who was interested in filling the assessor's seat, or the, the, one of the board members. And we, so, we were so fortunate that Tina Lane was in the audience and actually has taken the assessor class and was interested in holding that seat. My understanding is that Town Administrator Zubraki brought that recommendation back to the Board of Assessors, and Mike, was there a vote of the Board of Assessors or recommendation?
Yes.
And what was that?
We voted in favor of Tina Lane.
Excellent. So that's wonderful, thank you so much. So I will entertain a motion that the Board of Selectmen also vote in favor of.
So you need to, even though they had a separate vote?
Roll call vote for Mike?
Including Mike, and as long as, there's a total of five people entitled to vote, because it's six people minus the vacancy, and so as long as three of the four people here tonight vote in favor, then that will be sufficient by roll call vote, yes.
Yep. So, we're going to all vote together. So I will entertain a motion to vote to appoint Tina Lane to the Board of Assessors until the annual town election in 2024.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor by roll call vote.
Peter Fitton, aye.
Elvin Caro, aye.
Mike Cataldo, aye.
And Ruth Perrine, aye. So Tina, you may see Pam Thorne for your appointment card.
Thank you.
After Pam Wither gets that taken care of, so give her a day or two. What's today? Today's Monday. Give her until Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, that's true. Okay. Let's try.
So we're all set?
You're, oh, yes, you are all set. Thank you so much.
Sorry for the mix up.
No, not a problem.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Jason, if you want to join us at the microphone, so the board will recall that we had a request made by Mr. Heath to allow for the issuance of one additional resident sticker to accommodate one more vehicle than the number of licensed drivers in the residence. So Mr. Heath currently has five vehicles and only four drivers, so based on the Town of Essex regulations for the issuance of resident parking stickers, he didn't qualify. The board did discuss this at our last meeting, and we did vote not to issue the sticker. Mr. Heath has asked to join us again to further discuss it and just kind of talk, give us some talking points. So Jason, if you want to just announce your name and address, and then I'm going to let you present.
Yes, Jason Heath, 63 Wood Drive, Essex, Mass. I'm here today asking for one extra sticker, or an additional sticker of four. This is a unique year, being that for the last three years, I've had the same amount of five vehicles with town parking stickers, because I purchased a dump sticker. So if you purchase a dump sticker, it counts automatically as a town parking sticker. So I've had five stickers for three years. I probably could have had them longer, but I've only had my boys driving for the last three years. So for three years, I've had five stickers. So this year, I opted not to buy a dump sticker. I opted for a different route. I went with a personal dumpster handle, there's a difference. But I'm, so now I'm being penalized a dump, a parking sticker, because I'm not buying a $150 dump sticker. I could go tomorrow and buy a $150 dump sticker and have my fifth parking sticker. Just doesn't seem fair. I mean, I understand the board has rules. I'm here saying that I'd like to change the rules, and you have the right to, to, I guess, grant it, and it's different this year. I don't know how many other requests you've had. I have one sticker, it's a Jeep Grand Cherokee, registered to my wife, at 63 Wood Drive, currently the only vehicle in my driveway without a sticker. And if you don't vote through, which is your right, if I read in your rules under Article 8, I may bring in a sticker, peel it off the vehicle, and then say I want to change it to another vehicle, and I can do that every week. I can do it every day, and there'd be no additional fee according to your rules if I read this correctly, which I'm trying to avoid. You don't want me in the town clerk office every week saying, I'm going to park this vehicle down the point because I'm using my boat this weekend, and getting another sticker. You're going to run out of them.
It's true, it will cost five bucks each time.
Doesn't say it. Does not say additional, says I can render my stick, my current sticker and get a new one. There's no additional fee required in that statement, by your law, by your rules.
Thank you.
So why don't, why doesn't your fifth vehicle qualify?
I only have four drivers, and by your rules, I can only have one per driver sticker. But if you buy a dump sticker, you can have two dump stickers in Essex that comes with a parking pass, which I've done for the last three years, which I've been in town 52 years, but the last three, I've had five vehicles. So this is the first year I haven't been able to get a sticker for all my vehicles. And I do use different ones when we use, I have Maureen down the point, we get different vehicles we park down there at different times.
Do you have any questions, Alva?
I don't, I, I, this is.
Is this a loophole in our regulations?
Well, that's what I'm wondering. I mean, it's, clearly, the fee is one related issue that we need to address. I'm wondering if, I mean, I said this at the last meeting, which is now that we have changes at the transfer station, and the Board of Public Works Commissioners opted not to align with our regs when we did our parking sticker regs, I think that we need to, you know, start to align these, so maybe we need to.
How long ago did that happen?
A year ago. These regs have been in place, do we have a date? March 7th, 2022, so it's been a little over a year.
I don't think the dump stickers have changed in years.
No, 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 they did not. When we changed, so.
The loophole is, is that this should have been, if you got a dump sticker, it should have crossed your name off from two stickers, which I think it probably never did, and that's why you've been able to get, get the dump sticker for two cars and then just buy.
Why should I not be able to have every vehicle in my driveway, but if I have a vehicle that's titled by my address that I live at and pay taxes for in Essex? I don't know why I can't have a sticker for it.
I don't disagree with that.
But that, this a lot, does not allow that.
So, when we did this back in March of '22, we tried to align with the transfer station to make the rules consistent throughout town. They, they're autonomous, they didn't want to align with us, that's fine. So we still chose to adopt this. The goal was to make things, the ease of issuing resident parking stickers easier for the town clerk, black and white, crystal clear. We had a lot of loopholes, or precedent setting, or having to make decisions, and there was a lot of yelling at town employees, which is not acceptable. So this was black and white, and then the recourse was, if you didn't like the decision, you could appeal it to the Board of Selectmen. That's how it came here. This is what brings you here today. So I do agree that there's, with the change of the transfer station situation, not the rules or their policies, but the pay as you throw, the change in the, you know, the limits, maybe we need to relook at our regulations and allow for situations like this, or talk about a cascading fee, so that it's not one versus the other, or, you know, something like that, so.
Are all vehicles registered and pay excise tax on and registered in Essex?
Yes, they are.
Yeah. So it's really just the number of drivers, registered voters?
Yeah. They're all registered to vote.
Yeah.
Yep.
But it's one per vehicle is what the regulation says, so.
Yep.
Given the circumstances, I think what makes this difficult is that we, we all, we all know you, Jason, obviously. We know that you actually have five cars, you have four drivers, we know your circumstances, but it can't be about, for me, it's never personal. It's just black and white and facts. I think that, given the circumstances, the transfer station transition, I'm inclined to allow the fifth sticker at this time. I do feel that we need to maybe relook at the resident parking sticker rules. We need to address fees. It does say in number four, resident sticker fees is $5 per sticker, so I mean, I think that that is open for interpretation, that with each sticker it would be $5, but I think we maybe need to tighten this up a little bit, because it's been brought to our attention. So if the board doesn't have any further discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the fifth sticker for Mr. Heath.
Yes, I would like to suggest that it be a non precedent-setting decision.
I agree, but I also think that we should put the resident parking sticker rules and regs on our next meeting so that we can address these right away, so that we close any loopholes, or not loopholes, but any problems that are going to arise from the transfer station situation.
Yeah, I think that's great, and, and being the, the type of town that we are, that these need to be on, pushed out on the website so that people are aware that if and when we make changes, that we communicate it.
It was not easy to find this on the website.
They are on the website.
I found it, but I took some digging and called on some friends.
Yeah, it's, it's, I believe, the town clerk's.
Under town clerk, yeah.
Because she's the, because she's the parking clerk, that's why, but.
And Jason, you could have texted me, I would have been happy to get it to you. Two clicks.
I was on a mission.
Call the office too. Call the office, we'll find it for you.
Did you say you're going to discuss this in the next meeting?
No.
No.
No, not.
I'm, I'm in the middle of a motion, I'm just waiting to see if somebody wants to move it and second it for me.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 When are you going to discuss updating this?
At our next meeting.
When is that? Because I like, like, like to be present.
Yep, it's going to be on the 24th at 6 o'clock here in the room.
I'm on vacation. If I come back, my wife will kill me.
You, you are welcome, so Jason, you are always welcome to put an email together as a public comment or recommendations, and we get those. Those will go. Those will go to Pamela with them, and Pamela circulates those to us. So either we get them between meetings or in our packet for the meeting. So we always get those.
I guess not knowing what your thoughts are on how many vehicles and stickers per household, it's hard to comment on something that's not going to happen yet.
Makes sense. But give us your thoughts.
You can make a change and put it through next meeting because this needs no town vote, correct?
Correct. Yep.
So it might be way too late before I even know what it's all about.
Right, but you, but if you have thoughts about it, limits, costs, fees, you're welcome to put those into writing because you've clearly read it several times, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
So what are your, give us your thoughts in an email.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Someone with a town clerk, I may stop down tomorrow for an extra sticker.
I'll be talking to her in the morning.
One-day wine and malt licenses. We have the Essex County Greenbelt Jane Rum Rel for use on Friday, August 25th, 2023, between the hours of 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. within the confines of the Cox Reservation 82 Eastern Ave.
So moved.
I will entertain a motion to approve that one.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. John Collins, if you want to join us? 21-day wine and malt licenses, as it appears on page three and four of the agenda for Great Marsh Brewing Company, John Collins, with multiple dates between July and September for use between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. within the confines of the patio area behind 103 Main Street as shown on the attached site plan. So I know that at the last couple of meetings, John's come before us, and the board has approved four licenses and then an additional four because of wanting to hear how things went due to weather and so on and so forth and seating. So is there any questions, comments?
I drove by a couple of times. I know that there was a couple of people there, but nothing, nothing huge. So I'm assuming that there was no police presence or any parking issues either. So I don't have any addition, well, the only other questions I have is more for the fact that we have a lot of these outdoor things and whether or not a calendar, it could be put together on a calendar, available on the website just because there's, you know, a lot of things happening like this. And then the other thing is, is additional parking at Memorial where cars could park so that if there are, you know, if it is a good weekend and the town is overloaded with vehicles down by Memorial Park where the boats park on one side and sometimes they put the cars on the thing, that, those were the only two comments I had about these.
Yeah, and the signage, I think some of the wayfinding from the placemaking is, there are signs down there that do say that single cars can park in the outer areas of the parking lot. It's a matter of, I mean, if the businesses want to put a sign in their door that says additional parking in the municipal lot or, but the wayfinding from the placemaking plan does talk about signage to point toward the lot and what we can do with that because we did decline the parking and wayfinding signs that were, that was a state grant that we looked at a couple of years ago. So now we're talking about what we can do by way of those signs.
Did the Woodman's parking spaces go through? Is that official?
Not yet, no.
No, okay. Anybody here, any comments on anything, observe anything over the last weekend?
I mean...
It's been two weekends, sorry.
It's been a couple of weekends. This certainly, the weather has been terrible. Yeah, so it's tough to say whether there's going to be, you know, tons of people flocking the patio or just the handful of people that have been back there because the weather has been terrible, so. But no complaints. I mean, there's been no police complaints. There's been...
No traffic issues.
No, no traffic issues. There's no need for detail like there was when they first opened, so nothing like that.
Yeah. I think I'm fine.
So do you, so do you, I know that you've been doing these piecemeal. Do you want to approve all 20? Do you want to?
I recommend doing all 20. I think that, I don't know what this summer's going to bring, but to have, to keep coming back. I think, I don't know if, I don't think anything's going to happen, but if anything drastic happened, could, you know, we could, you know, call a special meeting or something to talk.
The licensing board has the ability to revoke licenses at any time should there ever be a problem?
With, with a hearing.
With a hearing.
If they're granted with a hearing.
Yeah. I agree with Alva to do the full season.
Okay. So Alva, is that a motion to approve all 20 for Great Marsh?
That is a motion to approve all 20 for Great Marsh.
Second.
One-day liquor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain. Thank you, John. You're all set.
Right.
Maureen, are you here for Woodman's?
Yeah.
So we have eight one-day wine and malt licenses before us as listed on page four and five for Woodman's. Lobster Pool Douglas Woodman for use on multiple dates between July and August, all between 11:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. within the confines of the Salt Marsh Tent at 119 Main Street. And on their licenses, it also does, it mentions the entire grassy area that we have depicted on the map with the tables and the tent and everything. So is there any, Maureen, did you have discussion? You said, oh, yes, like you wanted to discuss it.
It's the whole thing. I'm just, you know, here by coincidence that John's here, and obviously, you know, I've been working hard with him, trying to help him get through this. I think if I'm correct, we are eligible for 30 one-day liquor licenses as businesses. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So we've used...
22.
12. This is...
Right.
Eight. That's going to give me 20.
You'll be at 22, I believe.
And I think John's going to be at 29 now. Is that correct? You've got one left? I think, I think just my comment now, just sitting here and thinking about the parking, I should have brought that up a second ago because really what I think is 24 Martin Street could have parked probably 20 cars, and you probably would have got a lot of use out of it because there is a parking problem. As you know, I've also been working with Jocelyn at Mayflower to help her too. So it seems to continually be a parking problem for all the commercial people. So I just hope that someone's thinking about that. You know, we have a lot of benches that we can park people at, but we really don't have a lot of car seats, car, parking spaces to park the people to go to the bench. But I guess maybe the intention is that just the residents in Essex are using the benches and that you're not really bringing people into town to park the car because there's not a lot of places to park. And I do feel like we've spent an abundance of time on this issue in the last four years. And I agree with what Alva said tonight was, it's nice that we don't have to keep coming and spend two, three hours for something that we're eligible. I just want to make sure we're eligible for these, right?
You are.
And so to sit here, you know, and have to come through and paperwork, you know, God bless Pam, she's done an amazing job on all this paperwork for all of us. She's been tremendous help. And you can obviously tell the weather's been a strain again, 2020, 2021, 2022, these businesses have had incredible, I'm still a little confused about why you would want a calendar of this. I need to understand that.
No, more calendars so that people go visiting Essex or they're visiting Gloucester, they can look at their calendar events and say, oh, my God, look at all these fair gardens or look at all these. To me, they're drawing points.
Sure.
And it's a double-edged sword because you bring people in, then you could have parking and traffic and all kinds of trouble. So, but I do think that even for the town, like, you know, if I'm saying, oh, wait, I have friends coming in.
That's right.
That's why.
That's right. And I agree with you. And if you follow Woodman's on Facebook and our Instagram, which I'm sure you do, you can see that we're constantly putting up calendars, trying to make it friendly for the residents, trying to make it friendly for the tourists, trying to, obviously, to continue to bring business here in Essex to support the taxes and the local government and everything else.
Thank you. Do you have any comments about these one-day wine and malts? No. Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments about these one-day wine and malts?
Nope.
Alva, any questions?
No questions.
Sorry. I will entertain a motion to approve the eight Woodman's licenses for, on page four and five as listed.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And to double check on that, I have how many left now?
You have eight left. You have 22 used.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. So that concludes our agenda. If there is any public comment on the line, please unmute and identify yourself. Oh, it doesn't. We have this.
No, we didn't. Yeah.
Do this too, the MOU.
No, hang on, sorry.
The stuff.
Yep, we do. I didn't check it. I just missed it.
Cannabis.
Okay, so possible vote on the MOU. So if everybody has their MOU in front of them, I apologize for public comment. Just give me another two minutes.
So the selectmen saw a proposed MOU for mutual aid between Gloucester and Essex Harbor Master Departments. The original draft had wording that was saying that there would be patrolling offered by Essex. The board has indicated, and I'm in agreement, that we don't have the resources to offer patrolling. The city has obliged the board's request. There were a couple of typos and a removal of the patrolling language, and that has all been done.
I don't remember her saying that.
Sorry.
That's okay. Does anybody have any questions on the MOU?
No, I think it, it makes sense the way it's worded now.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the towns of, the city of Gloucester and the Town of Essex.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ruth, did we ratify the shellfish fuel expense to shellfish? Was that part of that first block?
That was part of the 33B transfers.
All right. I wasn't sure.
Next, review and possible adoption of the Town of Essex Cannabis Social Equity Policies in accordance with the requirements of Chapter 180 of the Acts of 2022. I'm going to have Town Administrator Zupurki discuss that with us.
So the Cannabis Control Commission recently sent an email out to all the communities and the Commonwealth calling our attention to something that was expected of every town at the beginning of July. I took a look at that. It took me by surprise as well, but took a look at that, found an example that another town had already put together. And in fact, I think in the email that we got, it references just a few towns had examples of this policy. The policy is intended to encourage two, two different groups to be able to get involved in the cannabis industry. These include economic empowerment applicants and social equity applicants. I believe it's an attempt to take groups that have traditionally not had great opportunities and elevate those groups to at least have a first consideration by each community for participation in this industry. And I think it also has to do with how certain groups may have been adversely affected in the past by different things, illegal drugs. This happens to be a legal drug, but illegal drugs, et cetera. The legislature has all, you know, all the knowledge of the intent behind this, and I'm sure that those terms are very, very defined in other documents. But the requirement is that the town put together something that says if somebody from one of these two groups approaches and says, I'd like to be involved in the marijuana industry in the Town of Essex, they have a chance to be considered first in advance of any other applicant who might not be in the same class or the same group. In Essex, we have a few types of retail establishments that are allowed. They include marijuana retailer, cultivator, product manufacturer, microbusiness, testing laboratory, research facility, transporter, or delivery-only license. In Essex, each one of those things is limited to one license. Right now, we have one retailer and one cultivator, so those are completely taken up. So if somebody came and approached the town, doesn't matter who it is, you'd say, sorry, those are fully subscribed. But let's say one of those licenses that they decided to sell to someone else and they needed to get their own license. The idea would be that they would get a chance, somebody in one of those groups would get a chance to be involved with one of those licenses before somebody that wasn't in one of those groups. We have one other category, social consumption, and the number of licenses there is zero. We do not allow a social consumption establishment in the Town of Essex. So you have some general guidelines put together in a policy. Town Council has reviewed it, and I've made changes in accordance with her comments. I'm told that in November, the commission will provide much more detailed guidance on what a policy of this nature has to say, but that doesn't absolve the town from not having at least a basic policy in place, and that's what this attempts to do. Now, you might have specific questions about the wording, and I can, I can certainly get into any of that.
Yeah, and to me, the issue is when I went on both the cannabis website and the SEP website, it says the state of Massachusetts, the state of Massachusetts. I'm having a hard time with it saying, whenever possible, the Town of Essex will financial, will reduce financial barriers. What does that mean? So we get to give them a license for free? You know what I'm saying? Like, that's the, those types of things where it seems to me to put a burden on Essex to give something away. That's the only part that I have. Again, when you go on the SEP website, it talks about what the state of Massachusetts would do. So I just, I'm, that's the part I'm having a hard time with.
Right. So it does say that host communities are required to adopt initial policies and procedures, which is what this is an attempt to do. So we are required to do it, and Town Council did confirm that. With respect to your question about, you know, to what lengths will the town go to assist and to aid, I believe that if you keep it general in this, in this way, when an applicant comes, you can have that discussion. And I could say that in November, there's probably going to be very prescriptive things that you're going to be at least asked to consider by the state.
And so by the state, when you said that we have one license, retail one license, is that something based on the size of our community? Is that...
It is, it is based on that, but it's codified in, in a bylaw that town meeting decided to take the limits, and it was justifiable because of the size of our community. Yes.
No, that was, I mean, honestly, number four was the only, where I had the same questions as Alva, which was, will reduce the financial barriers and expedite the permitting?
Yeah, it says, it says wherever possible.
Wherever possible.
And you're leaving very general language in there.
It's general and it's vague, but, you know, to expedite the permitting, we know how that can go. I mean, I guess we can constantly push our inspection.
It will, it will take shape in a way that this board decides it will take shape. It's that simple.
Yeah. I think at the end of the day, we just need to have a policy in place so that we're not in violation of not having a policy in place.
That's right.
And it's pretty vague.
And then you're going to...
And that's the other thing. I searched. I tried looking for host, with policy required. There was nothing that said...
There is no guidance on it.
There is no guidance.
So what they did is they wrote a requirement for you to have one, not giving you any guidance on it, but you're in violation if you don't have one. And then not until November are they going to give you like a recipe book to figure out how, what it should look like. Doesn't make a lot of sense, but that's what they did, and that's why you're probably puzzled because it doesn't make a lot of sense.
No.
That's fairly typical.
Yeah, with the state, it sure is. So I will entertain a motion to, does anyone have any, want to make any changes or we find adopting this pretty vague policy? Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the Town of Essex Cannabis Social Equity Policies as provided in this one-page document.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, I apologize. Let's go back to public comment. Tina, you're the only one online with us. Do you have any public comment this evening? Hearing no public comment from Tina, I will congratulate you on your new position on the Board of Assessors. Thank you for stepping up. And Ms. Harris, do you have any public comment this evening?
Well, I have nothing.
All right. At 7:51 PM, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.